And I'm also going to be starting the Facebook Live feed and then we'll go back to screen share and go through our logistics. Okay, so we've now started live on Facebook. I'm gonna go back to a quick screen share to get things rolling. I see we have a few attendees already logged in, so that's good. Okay, I'm Todd Schmidt, the village administrator for Wannakee. Just a few details to go through before I turn the meeting over to Chris. So for the public who are participating or attending the meeting, keep in mind, oh hi, I see Doc Random arrived on time, just on time. The attendees are automatically muted. I can unmute you if need be. For the public comment section in particular, there is a public comment section on the agenda. For items that are not listed on the agenda, there's a raise hand mechanism for attending. So when that item comes up, if you care to make a comment, you can click raise hand. I'll see who raises their hand in what order and we'll be able to bring those folks in to make their comments. It's limited to one minute for public comments. And for those who might be on by phone, we'll call upon each one individually to see if they have any comments because I can't see if they have their hand raised. For the members of the village board as well as other presenters, everybody is muted. I'd ask that you remain muted unless you need to participate. And besides board members who we'd like to see all the time, please also mute your video unless you're amidst an item that you're participating on. And when board discussion occurs, President Zellner will call on each board member individually for comments. And all votes, by the way, will be taken by roll call. Remember to unmute yourself when called upon by village clerk Caitlin Steen, who will be calling the roll. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for May 4th, 2020 to order roll call, please.
Nyla Frye? Here. Gary Hertzberg? Gary Hertzberg? Erin Moran?
Here.
Phil Random?
Here.
Kristen Rungy?
Here.
Phil Williams?
Here.
Governor Zellner?
Here.
And Gary Hertzberg?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. First item we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was posted or was published in the Wannakee Tribune on April 30th. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on April 30th and the packet and agenda were made available on April 30th.
Okay, thank you. Then we have confirmation of open meeting, I'm sorry, our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? We only have one item. Otherwise, I'd look for approval.
A move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you would like to, if you have any comments about it, raise your hand as a board member right now. Okay, Nyla? Unmute yourself, Nyla. No.
I've been trying to get through and I didn't know how to do it.
Okay, go ahead.
I did want to have something pulled. There's one item on that. I just wanted to have a little discussion about something.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Quick. Okay. Chris, this is on his consent agenda, so the only item on is the scheduled bills. So if Nyla wants to discuss it, we should move that under new business.
Okay.
Okay, let's move it under new business.
Okay.
All right, so that'll come back up then later in the agenda.
Perfect. All right, next item then we have is our consent agenda. I'm sorry. Public comment. Is there anybody here who'd like to make a comment for something that's not on the agenda for this evening?
Yeah, I'm taking a look at the attendee list. I do not show anyone with hand raised. I don't have any participants by phone. So at the moment, no. And I do like to do this from time to time, so I'm gonna, I always pick on Roberta. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on Ellen real quick just to confirm our ability to utilize the system. So Ellen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
There we go, it works. All right, thanks Ellen. You can go back into hiding.
All right.
Well, hearing no other public comments, I will just say welcome to Nyla Frye, Nyla's first board meeting tonight. So on behalf of the rest of the board, welcome to the village board and congratulations on your election victory.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, Todd?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, first item we have is under presentations. Reminders about compliance with Wisconsin Open Meetings and Public Records Law. I believe Brian Kleinemeyer is going to be doing this and we do this especially when we have new board members, but we have a relatively new board at this point, so this is a good opportunity for him to talk about this. So Brian?
Sure, thank you, Chris.
Brian, I'm gonna bring up that screen here momentarily.
Sure, and I think the way that Todd had this on the agenda is appropriate. It's kind of reminders, high points. This is by no means an all-inclusive presentation. I think that the PowerPoint or the PDF that Todd had emailed out is only six pages long. Obviously, if people from the public want it, it is a public record. Couple of things for board members, certainly to keep in mind is first and foremost is that the village staff is here to help you on public records and open meetings laws. So always keep that in mind. If you run into something where you have a question, give Caitlin a call, give Todd a call, you can contact me. Then I would also say that there's lots of good materials that are out there. I believe that the materials that were emailed to you are part of an outline that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has put together and maybe even made a presentation to one or more committees in the village. So thank you to Claire Silverman, who is general counsel for the league. And on page six of your packet is a reference to the documents that the Wisconsin Department of Justice has. They have both PowerPoint.
That's paid, Brian, that's page six of the six-page PowerPoint that I sent out earlier, not your meeting packet.
Yep, sorry, my mistake, yep. Page six of the PowerPoint. That's a reference to the Wisconsin Department of Justice. The Department of Justice has PowerPoint presentations on both the open meetings law and the public records law. And the department has comprehensive guidelines for both the open meetings law and the public records law that are pretty easy to access on the DOJ website. And I'll be honest with you, I look at those documents quite frequently if an issue comes up that I haven't reviewed in the past. Turning to the six-page PowerPoint that Todd had emailed out, the information in this document is pretty general. There are some specific things that I'm gonna touch on. But as you look at page one of your document, it's basically a summary of the open meetings law that essentially, you know, for your purposes, basically every meeting that you would attend as a government official, as long as it's not a staff-related meeting, it's gonna be covered by the open meetings law. Public records, when you look at the public records, we kind of have a general statement on page one. Then as you get to, and I know I'm skipping ahead here, but if you look at page five, page five is the definition of record. And there's a number of things to keep in mind here when we talk about public records. One is that the definition is very broad and that's done purposely. Records of governmental bodies are supposed to be open to the public with certain exceptions. And it needs to be created or kept in connection with the official purpose or function of the agency, whether it's plan commission business, village business generally, the village board. The general rule is basically any record that you have that relates to the Village of Wannakee and how we operate, that's going to be a record. Whether it's an email, whether it's a letter that you receive, whether it's a PowerPoint presentation, essentially any format, it is likely to be a document that falls within the scope of the public records law. There are some exceptions that are identified on that page five. And one that probably comes up the most would be the purely personal property unrelated to the office. So just by way of example, if Todd happens to get an email from his wife saying that they need, he needs to stop at the grocery store on the way home, that even though it's sent to him on his village Wannakee email address, that's gonna be purely personal and is not gonna be a record under the public records law. I think the other thing to keep in mind when it comes to the public records law is the public records law is essentially designed to identify and deal with the processes to provide records to the public. There's also maintenance regulations. In other words, we have to keep our public records. Typically, we have to keep them for seven years. And here's where I want to touch on something, and I cannot express this to you strongly enough. When you are using email, and email is such a common thing for members of governmental bodies to use, use your Village of Wannakee email address. We all have personal email addresses. Many of us have personal email addresses and work email addresses. So for some of you, you may have three: personal, work, and Village of Wannakee. If you only conduct your business related to the Village of Wannakee using your Wannakee email address, that means when we get a public records request, and so many public records requests these days relate to emails. People want copies of emails. If you only use your village email address, that makes it pretty easy for village staff then to respond to the records request because we have the ability to go onto the village server and do searches of our emails. And quite frankly, we can probably do searches, I think Caitlin, you can correct me on this, I think we may need to get permission to do searches of your individual emails, but at least village staff can handle that for you. If you are conducting village business on either your work email address or your personal email address, that creates two problems or two issues. One is you have an obligation to maintain those emails. If you are only using the village email address, staff is gonna maintain all of those emails for you for the seven-year period that's required. If you're using your work email or your personal email, village staff does not have the capability to maintain those records for you. So then it is gonna fall to you to maintain those records. So that's one reason to use the village email addresses. The other is if we get a records request or if we're in litigation and we have discovery, if you are using your work or your personal email addresses to conduct village business, those email addresses then are potentially subject to discovery. And if it's just a public records request, it's gonna fall to you to start doing searches on your own emails to try to find out if you have any emails that fall within the scope of the records request. And so for all of those reasons, I cannot stress this enough, just use your village email addresses to conduct governmental business. Now, when it comes to records, that same concept is gonna apply to social media too. Social media is becoming very popular. I will tell you right now that your best practice would be if you're gonna use social media, only use the village's social media platforms, whether it's Facebook or other social media platforms. Just like with emails, then, you're not gonna have to worry about maintaining whatever comments you may make via social media on the Village of Wannakee platform. The village will maintain those documents itself. When you use social media, or if you use social media, it's certainly appropriate to use social media to reach out to constituents and try to get information from them. I would suggest to you, though, that you just use social media to try to gather information. To the extent that you have an opinion on a particular subject, it's really most appropriate for you to share that opinion at our open meetings. And so if the process that you utilize is you use social media, but you only utilize the village's social media and you're only utilizing it to obtain information from constituents, and then you share your opinions on the information that you've gathered at the governmental bodies, you're gonna be fine. If you start using different social media platforms that are not the villages, then it is your obligation to maintain whatever it is that you posted there. And I'll be honest with you, I don't personally use social media. I don't have, you know, a huge background on it. It is my understanding, however, that if you go onto somebody else's social media page and you post a comment on village business, that the people who run that page, whether it's an individual or a group of people, may have the ability to essentially take not only your comment down, but other people's comments because they're moving on to a different topic. The bottom line is, you may create an issue for yourself in maintaining the documents because once you post an opinion on a social media page regarding governmental business, if it's not ours, if it's not the village's social media page, you have an obligation to maintain that post. So to me, same concept as email, best thing to do is just use village social media platforms because then the village will be the entity that will maintain those documents.
If I could jump in real quick, Brian, I sort of wanna give up a shout out to Kristen who kind of what was called out for participating in an online discussion on a Facebook page, I think it was last week. Kristen responded on there but did not give opinion. Rather, she told those participating in the, on that page discussion to contact her via her email directly and that her village email, and that she'd be happy to discuss it more with them on that platform. So I think that would be the right thing to do if you're called out and you're feeling like radio silence wouldn't go over well. You know, being silent just might make it sound like, just doesn't come off well to the public. Well, to go on there and say, hey folks, I'm alive, I'm here, and I'm interested in hearing from you, here's how to get ahold of me properly, I would think, Brian, that that would seem like an appropriate step. Or I would also offer that if you wanted that message to be delivered, your other members of the village staff could communicate that on those platforms or over the village's platform.
And I screenshotted that, so that I have a record following Brian's advice.
Brian, do you have other advice in that area, Brian?
Well, I mean, I think doing the screenshot is important. I'm actually going to, I was gonna try to kind of switch gears here from records to the meetings law, but the topic that we were just discussing regarding social media, I mean, the rules that apply to records, they may not be the same as they apply to meetings, but we still get into some open meetings issues when it comes to emails or when it comes to social media posts. I guess before I jump from records to meetings, though, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that anyone else may have or if there are any questions.
Okay, so what I'll do is just like when we're taking votes, I'll just call off the board members. And if you have a question, great, ask it. If you don't, just say, no question, thanks. Okay, so let's start with Phil.
I intend to be quiet.
Okay. Aaron?
No questions, thanks, Brian.
Gary Hertzberg? Gary Hertzberg? Nyla Frye?
I'm good, no question.
Kristen Rungy?
No questions, thank you.
Bill Random? So Todd sends me. You muted yourself accidentally. Todd sends me a village update on my work email. Is that the wrong thing for me to do?
Well, I guess I would say this, because Todd is sending it to you from a maintenance standpoint, it's already gonna be maintained on the village server. So as long as you do not reply or you do not send it from your work email address to someplace else, you don't have the maintenance issue. The issue that that raises for you, though, is, you know, if we have a public records request or if we have discovery, it is going to be a fact that you've used your work email address for village business. And so to be, you know, whether it's discovery or public records request, if we do get a question, we're likely gonna have to have you search your work email address just to make sure that to confirm that the only emails that you have have come from village staff, for example, in which case we'd be able to respond to that request via, you know, the email that Todd sent as opposed to what you've received. If there's any way that you can access your village email address while you're at work and by switching platforms or what have you, that I would, you know, I would recommend trying to use your Wannakee email address.
So should I send in, ask Todd just to remove it then, or how do I, I shouldn't use that email then to send it back, say, get rid of this?
Yeah, I would, if I were you.
Bill, are you, if you're talking about those every other week department updates?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I think I might have had your work and village one included, but I can remove your work one.
That'd be great, thanks. Okay, Gary Hertzberg?
Yes?
Any questions for Brian?
No, I'm fine, thanks. I was having some internet connections here, problems, so I had to rejoin the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brian?
Okay, Brian, I'm gonna go back to the slideshow. Let me know what slide you want me to.
Sure, and so if you wanna go to slide two.
Whoops.
So slide two shows what I would call some, you know, general rules with respect to governmental bodies. I think when you look at the definition of governmental body, you know, probably the key there is the last phrase or formerly constituted some unit of the foregoing. Really, I mean, quite frankly, it's usually pretty easy to identify what's a governmental body for purposes of the open meetings law. You usually don't run into any disputes over that except to the extent that sometimes you'll see it with a subunit. And whether or not a subunit qualifies as a governmental body. The general rule is, yes, it will. Then the question is, okay, is the meeting for the purpose of exercising the responsibilities, authority, et cetera, of the body? Again, typically, the fact is that that is gonna indeed be happening. Usually you don't run into a lot of questions as to whether or not a particular meeting is subject to the open meetings law. There's always a presumption that if you have one half or more of the people that are together, that they are conducting village business. I think sometimes what you'll see, for example, the Village of Wannakee does this, as do other municipalities. There'll be certain meetings, committee meetings, let's say, of the village where at the end of the agenda, there'll be a note that says essentially, there may be a quorum of village board members present at this particular meeting, but there's not gonna be any business conducted by the village board. Rather, it's just gonna be business conducted of that particular committee. And that's one of the reasons why you put that notice at the bottom is because we're gonna have, you know, four or more members of the village board at a particular committee meeting. Then Todd, if you wanna go to page three, you know, there's really two, and we touched on this a little bit already. It's a two-part test to determine whether or not the open meetings law is triggered, what's the purpose of the meeting, and the number of people there to pass it. I'm sorry, the number of people to take action. That actually kind of leads into the next page of the PowerPoint presentation. This is where things can get kind of sticky. And this is where it's not just meeting in person where you can have issues of negative quorums or walking quorums. You can also have this occur on emails or at social media. And so one of the reasons why, when we were talking about records, and I was talking about if you're on a social media platform, it's usually, you know, best practice is to get information from constituents. And again, I wanna leave everyone, we can definitely get information from constituents via email, via social media, via other means. That's definitely information that you wanna get. Where you can start to potentially get into trouble, this could happen with email too, but it can certainly happen in social media. If you have more than one member of the governmental body on a social media platform and people do start sharing information about what their position would be on a particular topic, now you start to run into potential quorum issues. And, you know, on the right-hand side there, we're talking about a walking quorum. And, you know, one of the key things about a walking quorum is you wanna avoid a scenario where, you know, step back, the village board, a quorum of the village board is four. And so theoretically, you could have, because four people of the village board can be a meeting, you can have three people who could constitute a walking quorum. And I'm not suggesting that this would happen, but if you had three members of the village board on a social media webpage, and they started talking about governmental business and an item that could come before the village board, and they start discussing the pros and cons of that particular subject, and they decide, yep, this is how I'm gonna vote, how are you gonna vote? This is how I'm gonna vote. And you hit this, you know, the phrase there, less than a quorum size who agree tacitly or implicitly to act uniformly. So the key, you know, to have a walking quorum, the people who are involved in that actually have to have, you know, say, yes, this is the way that we're gonna act. But, you know, the tricky thing about walking quorums is it takes less than seven members. And if you start talking about a subject and you start agreeing to it, and you start saying, yeah, that's the way I'm gonna vote, you start coming really close to a walking quorum, and it's something that we wanna avoid. And it takes even fewer numbers to have a negative quorum. So if you have, you know, four people, we have a meeting with four village board members. When, if you have four village board members at a meeting, it takes three to pass any action. So two people can stop something. And so you look at a negative quorum, a gathering of less than one half of the members of a body can be a meeting if the number of members is sufficient to defeat a particular governmental body action. Again, that goes back to, if you're at a social media site, it's okay to be getting information from members of the public. If you're on a social media site that is not the village's, the safest approach is to do what Kristen did, which is to take that screenshot to make sure that you maintain it. But even just two members of the village board, if they start providing opinions on how they may act on something, that could constitute a negative quorum, and that would be problematic. So it all goes back to best practice is, yes, you can use social media and emails to get inputs. But my recommendation would be, and I think this is consistent with, you know, the fact that we wanna have open governments, is as government, as members of the village board or members of the plan commission or members of the finance committee, when it comes to what your opinion is on a particular subject, and, you know, how you wanna act or how you wanna vote, if you're just talking about that stuff at open meetings, you know that you're gonna be in compliance with the law.
So Brian, I just wanna clarify for those watching or listening. Brian said two members of the board talking together can constitute a negative quorum. I wanna be sure that you understand how that can play out. And here we're talking about this negative quorum section here. A gathering of less than one half of the members of a body can be a meeting if the number of members is sufficient to defeat. So the, a quorum of the board is four. Even though two is not a majority, you, in some cases, you need a majority to pass a motion. A tie motion is a fail. So if four people are at a meeting, a regular meeting, and two vote no to something, it has the power to defeat. So that's why a negative quorum can be just two members of the village board. It's interesting where technology has gone because we don't even talk about telephone calls or walking to someone's house, which I think is where the term walking quorum may have come from initially. But these conversations, you know, the notion of calling council member A and calling council member B to find out how they're going to vote or perhaps convince them to vote differently is achieving the same, is getting to the same problem.
Yeah, without question. And I think actually the telephone, you know, the walking quorum, it used to be. it used to be, when I first started giving presentations on the open meetings law back in about 2000, the telephone example was the one that we would give. You know, Joe Smith calls Jane Smith and says, how are you going to vote on this? And then Joe hangs up with Jane, and then he calls Bill Smith and he says, hey, this is what Jane's going to do, this is what I'm going to do, what are you going to do? And all of a sudden, you start getting into the issue. And again, it all comes back to governmental business is supposed to be discussed at governmental meetings. Okay? There's nothing wrong with getting information from constituents through social media, through telephone calls, through meeting them at a restaurant, through meeting them on the street. That's great to get as much information as you can. But when it comes to having discussions among yourselves, that, you know, the easiest rule is, let's do that at meetings as opposed to anywhere else. That's, you know, kind of the wrap-up. Again, this was supposed to be just kind of reminders and quick tips. It's certainly not all-inclusive. That's why I just want to reiterate that village staff is always there to answer any questions that you might have. And if you're just kind of messing around on the internet and you want to, you know, get some answers for yourself or look at some particular situations, again, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has a lot of good information, and the Wisconsin Department of Justice has a lot of good information. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you guys might have about meetings law too.
Okay, same thing. I'll go around the horn. Bill Rannam, any questions for Brian? So if we run into somebody at, say, Walktoberfest or one of those events, how are we supposed to, is that just, you walk past them or?
No, I mean, I don't want, it's, especially when you're talking to, I mean, just because you're, you're meeting with somebody, you know, that doesn't trigger it in and of itself. A few things are going to have to happen. And certainly, you know, the two issue is, you know, that's going to require that, whatever you talked about then came up at a meeting where there are only four people. What I, and you guys are definitely going to run into each other at WannaFest or at a restaurant or at WannaBoom. And I don't want to tell you guys that you can't talk with each other. I will say you have to be concerned, you know, you have to be aware of perception. If all of a sudden I'm walking around WannaBoom and I see all seven of you huddled in a corner, it's going to cause a little bit of a concern for me. But, you know, everybody's probably, you know, people are going to get beers together, people are going to run into each other. It's always nice to have a few other people there with you. So if anybody wants to say, wait a second, what were Gary and Chris talking about? You know what? They were talking about the brewers, and I was with them, and we were having a beer at WannaBoom. So, you know, you can run into each other, you guys can talk to each other. Avoid talking about governmental business. And, you know, just always be aware of what the rules are. So if there is a group of you that's together, it would be nice to have some other individual, another residents that are there so that they could say, yeah, we weren't talking about governmental business.
Thank you. Okay, to be clear, I'm just going to make a quick point here. At WannaBoom, I don't even have time to have a beer with somebody else. So, all right, moving on. Kristen?
No questions.
Nyla?
Okay.
You're live.
Oh, okay. I'm in? Okay. I have a question pertaining to closed meeting law. Can I ask that tonight?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I would like to know why, to me, it seems that before we go into closed sessions, that it seems to be a more of a blanket statement rather than more specific. And why it can't be more specific?
Well, I think what you run, I mean, we try to be as specific as we can. One of the, one of the things that you have to be, or one of the reasons why a governmental body would be a little bit, talking at a higher level when it comes to the agenda item and what you're moving into closed session on, is to the extent that all of a sudden providing specificity, specificity about what you're going to be talking about, then you almost defeat the purpose of the closed session. And so, you know, I think probably the two, the two primary reasons, at least my, from my experience, the two primary reasons why, you know, common councils or village boards move into closed session are either it involves litigation, or, and they need to get attorney-client privileged advice from the attorney, or it has to do with some type of bargaining and they, you know, whether it's financial issues or other terms and conditions. And so I think what we've tried to do here and what other communities try to do is, to the extent that you can provide a little bit of information in open session before you go into closed session, that's the way you approach it. But if you provide too much specificity within the agenda item, the concern then is that you're going to essentially make public the information that you want to discuss in closed session. And that's the whole purpose for going into closed session in the first place.
Thank you. I'm not, you know, it's the way you do it, it's not what I, the way I think it should be done, but if that's what you've been doing, I guess that's what you do. I just think it would be better to say, for instance, if you're going into closed session and it pertains to finances, to state it's for finances, than to have it more open and perhaps discuss about finances and then infrastructure or whatever. To me, that would be more open. And I just feel the public needs to know why you're going in the closed session, and it's not just an open statement.
Okay. Well, we can, we can work on that.
Okay.
Nyla, thanks for that. Brian, maybe you could just clarify too, because Wanake is not the only community that you represent. For other closed sessions and other communities, is it any different than how we do it?
Um, I would say that the way that Wanake handles it is very typical, not only with the other communities that I represent, but the other communities that my firm represents where there's other attorneys, but I know what's going on. And so lots of times what you'll do is essentially when you're identifying the agenda item, what you try to do is you try to merge the language that's in the statutes that identify the bases to go into closed session with the information that you think is appropriate to identify the agenda item. What I've seen happen, and I think it certainly happened in Wanake, is the governmental bodies don't necessarily try to put more information in the agenda item. I mean, in part, for example, when you're going into closed session for negotiations, like if we're going to go into closed session and it relates to a TIF agreement, and there's public funding that's being requested. We identify within the agenda that that's one of, that's the reason that we're going into closed session is because they're making a request for public funds. So we put that amount of information in the agenda item. And then also, and, but then when it comes to the meeting itself, there's always, there's an effort to try to provide some type of update or some type of background on information that is not confidential but still relates to the agenda item before you move into closed session. So that that gives the public some, you know, the information that we think that we can provide to them on the agenda item, but not, we don't go so far as to disclose any of the information that we believe needs to stay confidential for purposes of, you know, and again, to, it's not just protecting, and it's not really protecting the village board for why we're going in closed session. We're, especially when it comes to dollars, we're protecting the taxpayers. I mean, the easy, the example that I always give is when we're negotiating some type of development agreement or some type of TIF agreement with a developer, we don't go to get, we don't get to go into their board meetings or their individual meetings with CEO and find out what their position is. They come to us, probably saying, you know, you know, they make an offer to do X, and they're probably willing to do more than X, but we don't know what that is. We need to protect the village taxpayers in the same way. We go into closed session, we discuss strategy. We then, you know, come out, depending on what the item is, we may or may not make an announcement in open session. But particularly when it relates to negotiations, if there's still going to be ongoing negotiations, the discussion that occurred in closed session needs to stay confidential to protect the taxpayers, just like the discussions that occur in confidence with respect to private entities stay privileged, confidential also.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary Hertzberg?
No questions.
Erin Moran?
No questions.
Phil Williams?
No questions. Thanks, Brian.
Okay, so the only question I have, Brian, and I'm just going to give an example just to make sure it's something that's clear out there for everyone. I actually have two things. One, if we're on Facebook, which I'm not, but if, we have members that are on Facebook, and somebody just throws out there, you know, we have a new park that's coming in, maybe we should be naming it after a person. And our board members jump in and say something. Say, we have three board members, and they say, you know what? I'd love it to be named after so-and-so. Something along those lines. Would that be a situation that would be improper?
Well, I would say this, I definitely think it would be, I mean, if, I would prefer, if it's social media, again, I would prefer that this be on the village webpage because then you don't have the maintenance issues. I'm going to assume under your example that it's not the village Facebook page, and it's a different Facebook page. So as a board member, if you go out there, keep in mind that whatever you say or post, you're going to have to maintain. And I'm not aware how to do that other than screenshot, so you'll probably have to do that. I definitely think it's appropriate to say, I want feedback from residents as to what that should be. If we start to have it, it starts, you start to get, it starts to get a little concerning if we start to have a discussion about what the name would be, and if as a board member you state your position, what it should be. And then it really starts to get dicey if you start having a conversation with the other board members on that site. So, you know, it's a case-by-case basis, and depending on what happens, you definitely potentially could run afoul of the law if you start sharing your opinion and you start engaging in a conversation with not just residents, but with other village board members. I would go back to, go on the, go on the social media site. If you say, I'd like to get feedback, screenshot the post that you made that said that you want to get feedback, and then it's great to get that information from the public. And then you can even share that at the meeting, whether it's a park committee meeting or village board meeting, where the issue is addressed. But you really start to run into a few problems if you start sharing your opinions. And the other way to say it is, you avoid that issue altogether if you don't share your opinion.
Okay. And then lastly, and everybody should know this, hopefully, how often should we hit reply all when the board members are given something?
I would say, I'm never going to say never, but I would say, I can't think of a situation right now where it would be a good idea to hit reply all. The only.
So when we receive things from board, from staff, and they hit, send it out to all of us, we should not be replying all to each other. Okay? How about the situation where if we want to communicate to all the other board members, you know, meeting is canceled or something that we have, and it's coming from one of us. So we're the chair of a committee, and we're not going to have enough people there. We send it to Todd, and then Todd sends it out to everybody, correct? We shouldn't just send it out to everyone?
Yeah. I mean, I would tell you that if you have a rare circumstance where because of timing, you're not able to use village staff, you could send out the email to everybody because practically speaking, that's just what needs to be done. But it is definitely the best practice to utilize staff to get that information out.
Perfect. Brian, thank you for all your help tonight and explaining that to everyone. And I hope everybody appreciated that, and it's very helpful for us and the community to know those things. Okay, let's move on. When our license and permits, discuss and take action on operator license applications for Bruce Dimming and Kristen Knackreiner. Caitlin?
Staff recommends approval of the operator license applications subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage training course and review by the Wanake Police Department.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion by Kristen Rungy?
Second.
Second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? If you have a comment, raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote please. Caitlin?
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Bill Rannam?
Yeah.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so then we're going to new business, and I'm going to move our, from consent agenda, the approved schedule of bills. Nyla, you had a comment you wanted to make in regards to this.
Okay, um, on the finances that, I don't know if I'm going to be saying this right or not, but under number 79395, trending now promotions, it's for the t-shirts. I just, I don't have a problem at all with the t-shirts. I just, this is just a way for me to point this thought out. I think we're, all municipalities in the state are headed for some tough times due to the situation that we're in with the virus. And I feel that we need to be very aware of everything that we spend and look at it as, and decide whether it's a need or a want. And be, and we're really going to have to pull back. I know there's a contingency fund, and I'm thankful that we have it, but it's only going to go so far. You know, there's different philosophies out there as, as far as the economy and how things will go when things start to go back. But I just feel that we're in a position where money's going to get tight, and we really have to watch the spending. And like I said, it's not because I have a problem with the t-shirts. I just wanted to get this thought out there.
Okay. Any other comments from any of your board members or look for a motion on that? I'll just say, Nyla, that I agree with you. But I also feel that any decision we make as a board, whether we're in a pandemic or any other time, we need to be conscientious with the taxpayer dollars. Doesn't matter the situation. So that's an important thing, and thank you for raising the point. I know that we do have a fund for these things for our employees, and we were trying to recognize our employees, I believe, in my discussions with Todd as first responders to just taking care of our community. So it was something that we felt was important at the time, and I was in agreement with Todd that it should be done. So any other comments from any of the board members? Always look for a motion to approve bills.
To approve bills.
Okay, so I've got, I've got Phil and then Kristen with the second. So roll call vote please.
Nyla Frye?
Hi.
Kristen Rungy?
Hi.
Bill Rannam?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams? Phil Williams?
Yeah.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item, we have a discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, are you going to just lead off and have Scott come in?
Well, actually, Scott and Carrie Meyer. I'm really glad that Carrie agreed to join us. She's a, she's a good local person who also has an important role at the county level in EMS coordination. So I think together, Scott and Carrie will take team on, fill us, filling us in on what's happening here as well as in the county. Thanks for being here, Carrie.
Thanks for having me. Thanks to Scott and Todd for the invite to join you all. I just wanted to give a brief update. It sounds like that's what you're looking for from the county perspective. And hopefully people saw that new press release today, 10.8 million for local businesses to help during this time of the pandemic. They're working closely with Dane by Local to help with grants for small businesses. So just one thing to check out. They also, we're working closely with our human services department and 211. So 211 is through United Way, and it's a great way for people that are in any needs, have any needs right now, or just don't know where to go for help. 211 is a great resource. They can point them in the right direction, whether it's for food, housing, help with bills, mental health challenges. This is a difficult time for everyone. So 211 is a great direction to go. Early on in the pandemic, we had, it seems, there was quite a few people calling 911 for some of these sort of questions. So we just want to make sure everyone knows that 211 is the great source for that. They, day-to-day, this is what they do, is help guide people in the right direction, so 211. Some of the other things we're working with Public Health on are mass testing, so drive-through testing, we're getting really close to that. The plan is to have that at the Align Energy Center soon is the goal. There's some logistics that need to get figured out with that. But the goal, as you saw with the rollout from Governor Evers, is that we increase the capacity for testing and increase our available PPE, and then we can start to open up the state more. So that's one thing we're working really hard on is increasing the capacity of testing. And my personal role with the county emergency management is working on PPE. And I have to put a thank you out to all of the Wanake residents. Early on in this pandemic, we put out a plea that anyone with PPE, masks, that sort of thing, even if it's in their woodshop or wherever it might be, that we had a need for our hospitals and our EMS and public safety. And I was amazed how many people from Wanake actually called and said, we have some masks, whether it was five masks or 1,000 masks. All of that added up and really put us in a better place as far as our capacity. So a thank you to everyone that helped with that, and the people that continue to help. Dane mask makers, they're sewing masks, and that's being utilized around the county. People are, you know, with their donations, things like that. People are really, you know, and they're listening, they're, they're doing the safer at home, they're being cautious. And I, I just want to applaud everyone because we know that this is not easy. I know now that I cannot be a teacher. Homeschooling and working is not going real well. So just a thanks to everyone in the community for all their hard work in staying safe. I want to put a big thank you out to Wannakee area EMS. Doing a fabulous job, we've been working closely with them to monitor the data from EMS calls. And I know Scott has probably shared some of that, but we're looking at all our respiratory calls that we're going out on for EMS and kind of monitoring if we see any trends and that sort of thing. We're looking at that countywide. And it's just helping us gauge where things are at and, you know, working with the hospitals to know where they're sitting with capacity. Those are some of the initiatives that we're working on day to day. I would ask Chief Russell if he wants to add some other things, then I would open it up if you have any questions for me.
All right, am I on?
You're good, go ahead.
All right, thanks Carrie. I also want to give a big thank you to the whole county emergency management for all the hard work and really helping us local entities out. They've been really invaluable with all this and it's kind of nice having Carrie right here in her backyard. As well as I gotta give a little plug to Eric Anderson, who's one of her right-hand employees, who actually volunteers with us. So thanks to county employees for helping us out. Also, as Carrie talked about PPE, I kind of want a second to thank you. I know I sound like a broken record on these, on these meetings, thanking everybody. But with all the donations for masks and PPE, we're actually at a point where we're able to use our PPE fairly liberally to make sure that our, our people are really staying safe out there. To me, it's kind of amazing that to date, we don't have any true exposures that we've run into on the ambulances. We've transported quite a few positive individuals and no actual exposures that we've had to follow up on. We haven't had to force anybody on any kind of a quarantine or anything like that. So that's been pretty impressive and that's all thanks to the community really reaching out and giving us the PPE that we need. As far as a few statistics, now that we're done with April, the overall call volume, we are down about eight percent compared to the rest of the year to date numbers. But what we are noticing is the calls are going on have a lot higher acuity. So people are waiting a little bit longer before they call 911 and wait until they actually have to get into the hospital. So we are seeing that and I really do want to emphasize that that's not always a good, the good idea to be doing. You want to make sure that if you do have any issues, you feel that chest pain, you need to get in and get it taken care of right away at the hospital. They're doing an amazing job to make sure that people that go in aren't getting infected, aren't getting mixed up with the people that do have COVID-19. So it really is a safe place to go into the hospital and make sure to keep your own health, definitely number one. We have seen a substantial rise in infectious and respiratory calls compared to this time last year. I think that's kind of be, be expected with what's going on out there. Lastly, in April, we did have roughly 25 what we call EIPS positive patients. That's that emergency infectious disease surveillance tool that the 911 center is doing. So what that means is they're asking questions of every patient that calls in to see if there's any possibility that they might be positive. And we did, we did have 25 of those in April. Some of those did end up being positive, the vast majority ended up being negative. Other than that, Carrie actually covered a lot of it. Thanks again for coming out on this call tonight or this meeting, I guess it is. I also want to take the opportunity, as long as I got the floor, to thank our volunteers and employees for all their hard work and dedication. It's really been amazing to see that not only have we had very few people take a leave during this time, but we've also seen a lot of individuals stepping up and taking huge amounts of extra hours to help fill the ambulance. To the point where we're actually staffing both ambulances approximately 50% of the time right now. Granted, it's a skeleton staffing, but we're getting both trucks out the door, which is really impressive. We really do have extraordinary staff here. And I personally feel that they were lucky as citizens of this district to be able to have a staff like that to take care of us. So I just wanted to get that out there as long as I had the floor. And I guess we can turn it over to the board if you guys have any questions.
Okay, I'm going to actually start with questions this time and more of a comment. So Carrie, thank you for all that you're doing. Good to see you again. Scott, per conversations that we've been having, what can you share with the board? Nyla brought up a point about our budget and such, how is our budget looking at the EMS with all of this that's going on?
So right now, my ransom numbers after I talked to you this morning, we're just over 13 and a half thousand that we spent in preparations, PPE, things of that nature towards COVID. I have not split out, so we've actually been ordering some extra wipes and disinfectant and stuff that we've been helping the whole district out with and supplying people with that. I haven't built any of that back, but that's the total number that we've been spending so far. But to put that in perspective, we also received, and I just looking back here at the exact number. So as part of the stimulus package, a couple of weeks ago, President Trump approved a CARES act stimulus payment, which has to do with Medicare patients and anybody that, that builds Medicare patients. And through that stimulus package, we did just decide we're going to keep it. It's just under 10 and a half thousand that we've gotten through the stimulus. So to date, we're approximately $4,000 that we've spent towards the efforts with COVID. So we're actually doing very, very well as far as that goes. Hasn't really affected our budget much at all yet. So I'm actually pretty happy with how that's all working out.
Good to hear. Thanks for sharing that. Phil, we'll go to you next, if you have any questions for Carrie or Scott. You're muted still Phil.
No questions, thanks for what you're doing.
Bill Random.
Well, I want to thank them both, obviously, the, you know, the community probably even as much because they did do what they're supposed to do. And so the prevalence has dropped amazingly in the last three weeks. So we very rarely are dealing with even possible COVIDs because the people have done so well. So thanks to those guys and thanks to the community.
Gary Hertzberg. No questions. Nyla Fry.
Just thank you Carrie and Scott.
Erin Moran.
No questions, just yes, thank you Scott and Carrie for all you're doing.
And Kristin Rungy.
I know questions, just that we're all really grateful that you guys are out there doing the job that you're doing. And when you need something, shout and I think the whole community will continue to respond. Thank you guys.
Thanks much for being here tonight. Todd, did you have a question?
No, quick, a little more update on village stuff before you move on. At the next board meeting, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, that village department heads are thinking, starting to think about what does, what does returning to some sort of normalcy look like for departments? Village Hall, for example, do we reopen the doors? If we do reopen the doors, do we have plastic screens up? Do we require PPE upon entry? What do we require of employees? Or have we figured out that we can do this remote working and satisfying the needs of our citizens adequately? Where we can perhaps stay sort of in a more protective situation until there's a more robust answer from the medical community, vaccines or what have you. So those are the types of discussions and thoughts that every department is having right now. What I'm expecting is that in two weeks at your board meeting, we'll have a full department head team back to give you a little update on, on everybody's facility thoughts.
Okay, thanks Todd. All right, Scott, thanks very much for being on again.
Carrie, sorry. Thanks for having me.
Actually, I see Carrie's name, but thank you guys for be joining us again.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next topic, we have discuss and take action on proposal to allow the installation of street pole banners recognizing Wannakee High School 2020 seniors. Todd, you want to introduce and then?
Sure, for a couple of weeks, initially contacted by Tara Swalv. She's a parent of a senior and engaged citizen member. She can pop on to the call here if she wants, so there's Tara. And she has a request and I'll bring up a slide in a moment that shows you what she and the group she's working with would like to accomplish. So there's, there's the, the specifics that she's going to propose. And in addition to that, I would note that the school district, we did get an email from Randy Gudenberg that says that they, they, they support the effort that Tara's proposing here. After Tara speaks, Chris, I'd like you to turn it over to Brian. There's a couple of things about signage, public signage like that, that the board needs to keep in mind in deciding how to move forward. So with that, I'll turn over to Tara and bring up the slide.
Thanks Todd, thanks everyone for letting me join your meeting. It was, I learned a lot so far and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you all. It's a unique time for all of us and especially our seniors. And we've seen a lot on social media and other places with all the cool things that are going on to celebrate the seniors, be it fire trucks or driving movie theaters or what have you. And there's a lot of limitations because of the safer at home. To the point, you know, where the seniors can't even at this point go in and get their, their cap and gowns. They're going to have to distribute a different way, which is totally understandable. Just trying to be creative in a way to uplift their spirits, have something to shine in the community in their honor. So they've been waiting for four years, some of them, for some of their activity banners to be hung in the cafeteria. And that's where this originally had started. And it definitely has blossomed into something to honor all the seniors from a community perspective, not just a certain group. The community is used to seeing these seniors and the whole school during the spring sports season, concert season, they're coming into graduation and recognition programs. So we thought that the way that everybody could see the seniors would be to consider putting their beautiful faces on flags going up and down Main Street. We've had several people, I put the idea out there and within a millisecond, I had volunteers. They're still like calling me every other second, asking what they can do. And I told them that, you know, we were first gauging interest and then we were, you know, had to go through the process. We think that it would be wonderful for people to be able to drive down Main Street and see their faces. And it would also maybe encourage some families to come to town or guests coming to town to see the banners in their vehicle, staying safe. But maybe using a drive-through, we're going to M&amp;M's or picking up an order on curbside from the town, you know, generating the business. We know that the, the flags downtown typically are used for a season. And we are, we're asking for the consideration that this pandemic be a unique season of consideration or that the graduation of these seniors, since this is a unique one time, hopefully ever happening to a group of seniors, that it could be considered a graduation season and the flags could be put up in their honor. As Todd mentioned, the district has approved it via an email. And I think Randy sent that to Todd and Chris and Todd could confirm on that. We have taken the step per the school district as well. And sent, Principal Borowski sent an email out for the seniors to opt in for their photos to be used for this project. I have to say that he included my email for any questions on the seniors, from the seniors on this. And I've received several anxious questions. They want to send me their photos, they want to get involved and help, so that is great. I just told them the whole tight that we are just doing initial discovery of this possible project. But we will be collecting the digital images as a committee, so that won't put, you know, the work on anybody else. We have also secured quotes from a couple of local printers. They've all been very gracious with the, the amount that they're going to charge us. They want to try to help make this happen and make it happen affordably for all. And I think I have over 100 parents who have already contacted me. I've also had a business reach out to me and they'd like to do a program where they raise funds for this project. It's called We Heart Our Seniors and they want to sell heart shaped take bacon pizzas where a portion of the profits come to this fund. And they think it will help their business as well as supporting the seniors. And there is also a little bit of money left over from our freshman homecoming project that we had out at the barn way, way back their freshman year. But we had some funds left over that we would love to use for this as well. So we're trying to speak to all the funding. Nothing would hit the school district or the village in that space because we understand there's, you know, greater need than, than that in place. And below, I think you can all see this is the timeline. And this is very loose and we know like a lot of things need to happen, but this is just a temporary timeline, hopeful timeline, if you will. If we could get this approved in the first couple of weeks and generate the funds, collect the photos. And then the printers have already indicated to me that they could make the flags in a week, week and a half and then have the flags hung the last week of May, beginning of June, graduation week timeline. And again, anything you guys would approve from a timeline perspective, I think would be much welcomed. And then on the right-hand side is just a display of, I thought visuals always help. Angela Doherty is a graphic design genius and she put this together for me so that we could get a visual. And depending on how many seniors opt in, it would need to be two or three per side. Felt like I talked a lot, but that's where I, where the project's at. And we're just hoping for any feedback or consideration that we could get to make it happen.
Okay, just throw in, throw in quick, I know Tara, you've done a lot of work on this. As, as a, as a parent of a senior myself, I know what the, the tiers, literally what the tiers look like for what they're foregoing, that they're used to enjoying, or what they thought they would be enjoying this season. So I definitely can feel that. I know the, in talking with Chris last week, I think one question was if we're do a take down of the current banners, reinstall them after this program and the time involved in that, along with legal expenses to craft necessary resolutions for approval, which Brian will talk about in a second. That wanted the board to know that that is estimated at 3,700 to $4,100. That was estimated from Brian and then also Bill Frederick and, and Public Works. So that's something for the board to consider to whether the expect, if, if supported, whether the expectation would be for that expense to be covered by the effort and the, the people that Tara was working with.
And just for your notes, everyone, we did put that into our plan that we would cover that. So if that needs to be covered, we can make that happen.
Okay, thanks. So Tara, I want to make sure I'm saying it right, Tara is correct, right?
Yeah, I'll answer to Tara, Tara, hey you, whatever.
So we'll come back to questions for you. Why don't we have Brian talk to us about the legal sides of this and everything quick before we get?
Okay.
Sure, so my understanding is that where these, I'm just going to call on banners. My understanding is where the banners would go would be on street poles, I think within the village. And so the, the poles are owned by the village and I believe that the poles are in the road right of way. And so typically we do not allow, you know, other, other entities to put, put signs on our property or put signs in the road right of way. You know, when you look at signs that are in the road right of way right now, they're essentially village signs. They're stop signs, they're directional signs, they're street signs. Now, there is a, a process in our code, it's section 133 dash 1032 that creates exceptions. And, and so, you know, the, the two issues, I think from a legal perspective to consider are, you know, I do think that we can demonstrate that this is a unique, a very unique situation. My understanding is this is, you know, that these, these banners are something that the school district would typically show. show at some point, you know, somewhere within the high school. Obviously, because of the virus there, the school district is not in a position to show those banners. So, you know, I definitely think that we have the ability to demonstrate that this is unique such that we, at least with respect to our code, we would not have any concerns with, you know, having to do this for somebody else. And there is a process in the code that will allow it to happen. It talks about it going to the plan commission. My thought here would be, and I know that we are under kind of a time constraint. My thought would be that if this is something that the village board is interested in doing, we would take it to the plan commission's meeting next Monday for a recommendation. And then it could come back to the village board meeting two weeks from tonight, which I think would be consistent with the timeline that's been identified. But, and so the issue is, you know, we have the ability to do it within our code. But, you know, we've had a lot of discussions at the village board level over the last year or so regarding our sign ordinance. And I know that we've had, you know, people who have spoken before the village board, including myself and Jason and residents, who've talked about a case that U.S. Supreme Court had back in 2015. And, you know, so the other issue is not just trying to be as consistent with our code as possible, but we certainly want to try to avoid running afoul of any Supreme Court decisions. Now, what I would note is, within that Supreme Court decision, the court kind of identified that, from a practical standpoint, they were creating some issues for municipalities with what its ruling was. But it noted that there are certain signs, you know, that are not going to run afoul of the court decision. And one thing they noted was that governmental bodies may put up all manners of signs to promote safety as well as directional signs and signs pointing out historic sites and scenic spots. And I think that, you know, first of all, I would hope that most people who would see, if the village were to do this, most people would see why we're doing this. It's for a public purpose. It's to help out seniors who are not able to utilize the process that they would have been recognized normally in the past because of the virus. And so the village, working with the school district and with parents, have stepped up and are going to do this. And honestly, when I look at these signs, you know, I think there's an argument that they serve a public purpose. Are they pointing out historic sites and scenic spots? No, they're not. But they're kind of akin to that concept of, instead of identifying a historic site or senior spot or scenic spot, we're identifying a group of individuals who are important to the community. And, you know, they otherwise are not going to get the recognition that they would have gotten had we didn't have the virus. So the bottom line is, I can't sit here and tell you that we wouldn't have issues in the future if we did this. But, you know, from a practical standpoint and what we're doing, I would hope that we would not have any issues. And, you know, I do think that the signs themselves would serve a public purpose. And so hopefully, that would carry the day if this is something that the village board wanted to do.
Okay, thanks, Brian. So I'm just going to do our round robin for Tara and Brian, if anybody has any questions for you moving forward. But so I want to start with Nyla.
Okay, I have a few questions. I would like to know, I think the project's a great project. We, as a community, need to recognize the class of 2020. Just for my information, I'd like to know if other municipalities in the district have been told about the project, if they know the project's going on, and if they've been asked to contribute, is my first question. Another question is, how many students are there, and are there going to be enough polls? And my last question is, is there a way, I don't know, this may not be the case, but are there students in the school district who don't have, you know, perhaps, and can't do this through social media, of getting pictures done for them?
I'm going to, the municipality, am I answering those, or Todd, are those for me?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm not used to official meetings. So the question about the municipality, could you, I guess I don't understand what you mean by that.
The school district has more than Wannakee in its district. So you have Westport, some students, I believe, from the town of Vienna, you know, from the surrounding area. I can't tell you exactly what encompasses the school district, so.
Yeah. All I can speak to, and Todd can jump in here, is that the school district, Wannakee School District, approve it. So I guess that would speak to any children in the school and wherever they live, if they're attending Wannakee. Does that speak to that?
My understanding, Nyla, is that there was no breakout, there won't be a breakout intended for the student participants, that from all.
That's what I'm asking. I'm asking if the municipalities have been asked to contribute or if they even know about the proposal.
Well, I'm guessing they may not know. But what I would say is that Tara, to this point, has indicated that they're prepared to cover any municipal expense expected. So the notion of the village footing a portion of the bill is perhaps something we're not going to have to be concerned about.
I just thought perhaps some of the other municipalities would like to help contribute.
Oh, I see.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Nyla, I will put that on my list to reach out to them. I would love them to contribute. So to answer your question, there's 340 students. They will have to opt in. The email has gone out from the principal for them to do so. Mr. Borowski is going to give me an update of how many they have, and we'll resign to gather more. We plan to use the, reaching all the students is, of course, very important to us. And the email will go out through the infinite campus. And all the students at this time, which is great because of the online learning, they all have their tablets or at home that they have issued to the school. So they all have access to their email through that.
Great.
Yeah.
And you asked about the banner polls. I think we have 67. And I believe their plan is to have multiple seniors on each side of the banner. So in this case, this particular banner would have six, assuming the opposite side also has three images.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
Okay, next, Bill Rannam. Yes, any comments or questions? You just, if we can do it, we should do it. Okay, Phil Williams?
I think it's a very neat idea. I was driving around town today and counting the polls also. And if we had six to poll, we would need 75 polls. All of Maine and all of Q won't take care of that. I was wondering if maybe putting temporary polls up in, like, Village Park could take the overflow or in Rip Park, either one, preferably Village Park. And secondly, the Department of Transportation will probably want to weigh in on the appropriateness of this as far as what's on Highway 19. Just to be safe, we should run it past them. But I think it's a neat idea.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Krista Rungy?
There we go. I wish each one of these kids could get a hug for going through what they're going through, but social distancing. I think it's a great idea. I do hope that for the kids who don't opt in, that it's confirmed that they did not want to. Just because, you know, I've got a, he's graduated now, but a high school senior at two at one point in time, who paid loose attention to their email even when they knew they should be. And then also Nyla's question too, if there's anybody that needs a photograph taken or has not had one taken. I'm hoping that there are photographers or people in the community that would step up and help make that happen. But yeah, give these kids a hug for us, for me, at least.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think I can include in the opt-in-out email that we send out the follow-up. Number one, it needs to go out to the parents as well as the students. I know that as a senior mom of a boy, and not that they don't, that sounded bad. But my son personally does not always check his email. And then I can put in there a photographer that would be willing to volunteer her time and services to make that happen as well.
That'd be great. And if they're taking donations as a committee, if that can go in the paper and whatnot too, I think there are a lot of people who would like to support it.
Okay, I'll talk to Roberta.
Erin Moran?
First, just a thank you to Tara and everyone that's been helping with this. Both, like, my sister, the senior, and, you know, watching her firsthand go through all this. And, you know, the girls I coached, they're seniors, and, you know, we're all heartbroken for them. I'm looking at the banners right now from my porch, and I think this could be a great project. I hope, you know, we can make sure this is cleared legally, and I like what Phil said about the DOT. But however we can support this, I really, I really think we should.
Okay, thanks. Gary Hertzberg?
I would agree. I think it's a great idea that somehow, to honor these kids, concerned about budgets, as usual. I know Public Works is going to be, I mean, they have a big list on their board. If you walk into their office, of all the things they can't get to today. And my concern is, those things aren't going to get gotten to because we're just adding more to their workload. But I think it's important to honor these kids. And hopefully, we can find a way out where it doesn't impact the Public Works or the village's budget. Because I, in my opinion, it's nice that the school says, yeah, we really support this. This is a great idea. But they didn't put any money up to help us. And to me, if they would have had the whole graduation ceremonies and doing the things they normally do, that money would be built into their budgets. And so if we have to end up paying out of the village's budgets, I would assume that the school district should, you know, also put in maybe half. Otherwise, it's a great idea.
So we haven't asked, we haven't asked the school. We have, our intent is not to have to ask either the village or the school. So I would hate to say that they didn't offer, they're not willing, and they wouldn't do some of that funding. If I were to ask, I'm sure they would listen.
Yeah, I would add, Gary, that I've had numerous discussions with Randy and Brian, the high school principal, about what they're doing. And believe me, they're working on a multitude of things, of angles, some of which, you know, require investment on the district's part to be of support to the seniors. I know the senior class officers are working on some things too. So do know that there is concerted effort occurring on the district's side of things.
Great, thanks.
My concern is keeping all the senior moms and dads from trying to hang them themselves because they've offered, and I told them that they can't do that from a liability standpoint.
And Tara, one other idea, if you run out of polls and there's not enough room, the outfield fence at Village Park where the ball diamond is, I mean, you could put them on the outside of that fence, and people could drive through the park up to the village center and be able to see them, if that's an option we have to use.
Yeah, we did think of that. I think that if approved, that between students opting out and putting four seniors on each side versus two or three, I think we can answer to the numbers on both sides.
Okay, so I started the conversations with Tara and Todd, and I'm not even remembering everybody who was involved. But my initial thoughts were, well, this is really a school function, not a village function. And that's why my first recommendation was to make sure that the school board was on board with this. And I'm assuming that with their policies, that they want all the students to be up there. They don't want kids to opt out for affordability reasons. That's going to be a big thing. If that's why a family's opting out, that's not a good thing. If I don't want my child to be on display, totally get that, that those people should absolutely be able to opt out. So my biggest concern is if the board chooses to do this, that there's kids that don't get left off because of the affordability part of this.
We did indicate, Chris, in that email, that there was no cost.
Yep, yep, got it. And so that's just my concerns. So I'm trying to go through all the things that I went through my head as we went through this. Next, Todd said there's 67 polls. So if there's 67 polls with banners on them already, if there's three on each side, that means there's six kids per poll. Is that correct? Am I saying that? So you'd have three on one side, three on the other side, going the other direction? Is that right? Tara?
I'm still muted. I'm shaking my head, yes. I had the number 75 for some reason, so I had, my math was working.
But my point is that 67 polls with six kids on each of them is 402 kids. We don't have 402. So I think we should be able to accomplish getting them all on the polls if we put three on there, or six, I'm sorry, three on each side.
Yeah.
So I think we can accomplish that side of it. In talking with Bill, and I haven't talked to him, Todd, you can maybe speak up to this, to Gary's point of all the responsibilities they have right now within the village. Bill is one of those people that will try to make anything we want, that's a great thing for the community, happen. However, we have to make sure that our basic functions are met first. So that's something I want to make sure, Todd, that's communicated with Bill to make sure we can do this. The financial part of it, it sounds like we don't have to worry about the financial, but we need to make sure we have the manpower. And I'm, you know, those are their toys, so to speak. Everything in the village is their toys, as the Public Works Department. And they don't want other people touching their toys necessarily for the fear of something happening to them that we don't want.
Yeah, and, yeah, then that's, that's in all ways a liability matter, both using our equipment as well as putting up signs, which are essentially public signs in public places. If non-village employees are injured, we don't have coverage that might cover a claim as a result. So that, yeah, this would need to be done by employees. I have discussed with Bill a couple of times. Bill would have brought up with me if he thought this was an impossibility. The only thing I would say is if, I mean, if something occurs, a storm, and there's a lot of limbs down, and who knows what, the conditions can change. It's so terrifying, if they're wanting to be up on Week A, but there's a serious event, our crews are probably going to be unable to jump onto that project, and there'd be some level of delay as a result. So as long as there's willingness to be flexible there, my sense is that Bill can accomplish the job for us.
Yeah, I think if they're up at all at any point, a lot of smiles from that.
Yeah, and Gary, to your comment in regards to the school district and them potentially paying, or they should be part of this, I agree. However, I think they're trying to use their funds to do other things in addition to this because this is such a unique situation. So before we, you know, anticipate or expect that they would be participating in some funding, I think that, you know, they're going to do a nice job for the students as well. State Highway field covered already, and those were all of my concerns or questions. And I think they've all been resolved. The funding was going to be an interesting one, I thought, but it sounds like we don't have to, that's not going to be an issue at this point. So my next is, and only concern is what Brian talked about in setting precedents. And we are setting a little bit of a precedence here in doing this with the banners. Maybe a concern, maybe not. Brian, do you have any other comment that you can say about that? I know we're setting a precedence here. So if we do that, are we opening ourselves up to whatever group coming and saying, "Look, it's our 150th anniversary," no pun intended, with the village next year? Can we put up signs honoring this business or whatever it might be?
Yeah, I mean, I would say this, listening to all your comments, I would, you want to do it, do it. I mean, I can't sit here and tell you that it's an absolute guarantee, but you know what? At some point in time, it's the right thing to do. We're going to prepare a resolution. We're going to follow the village code to the extent that we can. And we're going to, we're going to highlight the fact that this is a unique situation, and the facts demonstrate that it's a unique situation. So I would not allow what limited risk there may be associated with allowing these signs in the right-of-way and on village property to stop you from doing something that you clearly want to do. And I don't see anybody could dispute that this is going to benefit the community because, you know, my kid doesn't live in Wannakee, but he's a senior. And, you know, his life, you know, everybody's life's been so disrupted by this virus. There's no way that you can question that.
Okay, so really what we're trying to accomplish tonight then is to give a recommendation for our next meeting. With that, it sounds like our next meeting is the 20th of May. Is that right? Right on the calendar there?
18th.
18th? It's the 4th? Yeah, 18th, sorry. 18th, is that enough timeframe for what you're trying to accomplish? Eighteenth, is that enough timeframe for what you're trying to accomplish? Tara?
I can make anything work.
Okay, otherwise is it something, Brian, that we need to wait until then or could we decide this tonight?
Um, well, let's, let's think about that for a second. I mean, I do think it would be a good idea to have, have this, you know, in the public record through a resolution. And so I do think that we would want to have it on the agenda for the 18th. That being said, you know, I don't, I, I don't even think you would probably be able to get them up there before the 18th because so much other work needs to be done. I, I would say that, that there seems to be a pretty significant consensus from the village board though, that it's supportive of this in particular because the village isn't going to have to expend any funds. So I would feel comfortable moving, you know, as the school district or as parents, moving ahead with the idea that this is going to happen. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying, I, I do still think you should bring it back on the 18th, but based on everything that you've said tonight, I, I think it's going to be a proper investment if everyone pushes forward with this process right now.
Okay, so do we need to have any kind, do we need to really state anything other than, what, what do we need to do at this point then?
Well, Todd had a recommended motion on page 19 of your packet that I think in light of the conversation that you've had would make sense.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Aaron Moran.
All right, I'll move to direct village staff and village attorney to draft appropriate approval documents to allow the installation of street pole banners recognizing Wanakee High School 2020 seniors and to bring that item back for further consideration at the May 18th village board meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
I think it was Aaron. I think Bill Random got in first. So I'll say if, does anybody else have any other comments? Raise your hand, please. My only other question or comment was that the banners, when they're done being used, how are you handling those? If we're going to have three kids on it, or who gets it?
Yeah, that is a part of our committee discussion. So my, my question, I asked the vendor who, the vendors that I've gotten quotes from, if it's possible, if they could make a replica, if all three of them want it, that the, that they could have. So that's also going to be a part of the quote.
Okay, thank you. Nyla, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to make the comment that unusual situations require unusual actions. And I think this will be something that the community can be proud of and the students can feel good that they were recognized by the entire community.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we have, anybody else with hand up? Otherwise, we have a motion by Aaron, second by Bill. Roll call vote, Caitlin, please.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Tara. Good luck with everything and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, discuss and take action on 2020, 2021 committee appointments. So it was in your packets for committee assignments for this upcoming year. Basically for our, our trustees, I took the same approach that John Lovemeyer always took before me, which is if you have the most tenure, you have probably some precedence as far as what you might want for committees. And then people, if people wanted, they could indicate if they wanted to be on a different committee. So all of you have been assigned committees on there. And so why don't we do two different separate motions and one will be for our, our trustee commission assignments. Everybody has a chair position for a different committee. And tried to look at your talents as well for what your backgrounds are and that also makes good sense for what committees were chosen for you. But if, if somebody has questions for me in regards to this, now's a good time for it to do it. Otherwise, we'd look for a motion on this. So anybody have any questions to start off with? I'll see if you raise your hands. Okay, no questions. Then I'd look for a motion for the trustee committee appointments. So moved. Motion by Gary Hertzberg.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Okay, any other comments? If you have a comment, raise your hand. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Kristen Rungy.
Aye.
Bill Random.
Aye.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Aye.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, then we have the citizens board committee and commission appointments. We had a good amount of people apply for committee positions. Always can use more. So as you're talking to people in the committee, community, recommend and try to help them to understand the value of the committees and why we need to have more people involved with our community. But those who are listed here, some of them are on a rotation basis that we didn't have anybody else necessarily that applied. But others, we have some changes in here and I think they're going to be great for each of those committees and commissions. So any questions in regards to any of our citizen committees? Raise your hand, please, if you have any questions. Okay, seeing no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the citizen board committee and commission appointments.
So moved.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
I think Nyla was first, so I'm going to say second to Nyla. Roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the fourth item on our agenda, discuss and take action on the Heritage Hills development. Veridian Development at the corner of State Highway 113 and North Division Street, AKA the running property, annexation agreement and phase one development agreements. I think we're going to probably try to stay in open session for this whole thing, but if we need to go into closed session, we can do that later. Who's introducing this one? Is it Kevin or Todd or Brian?
Kevin.
Kevin, perfect.
Am I sharing my screen okay? Okay. Well, we'd like to spend, Brian's going to help me work through this. We got three items we want to discuss with the village board. And then Dan Day or others from Heritage Hills may want to follow up with you. The three things we want to talk about is the Division Street extension and a request for a partial contribution from the village. We want to talk about the traffic impact analysis, the short and long term that go along with that. And then on water improvements and with regard to the high pressure, low pressure system. The, the first item is really is much part of the annexation agreement, really developers agreement is really focusing in on, on phase one. And that's why when we add it to the agenda, we made it clear that we may be talking about things that are part of the annexation agreement. That'll come in later phases and this really Division Street is one of those. And this, this sketch that's up here now is, is only a concept. It's not intended to be the, the final design. This roadway will have to go through the parks committee and through the public works committee and have some discussion. I know Nyla asked a couple of questions about this. I think when it gets to the parks committee or probably the parks committee, where they'd, maybe this is to put you on notice, Dan, that the committee will probably want to see it staked out and have a visualization before they have a discussion in terms of how this is going to work. But the concept is, is that for any of the land that is impacted on the, on the proposed plot at lots 189, 199, 91, that shaded in area, that the village should be making a contribution for that right of way at the same cost that the, that the Heritage Hills is acquiring for us. Where, so in this case, it's a, it's a dollar fifty a square foot. And here that would equate to about $9,000 of contribution from the village towards the right of way. We're not making an, uh, we're not participating in the outlot with the understanding this would be in a proposed park area. And what we're trading off for from parkland on this side, we're picking up on the other side in order to make the, the sledding hill work. The second item is the traffic impact analysis. So the, the TIA really identified some short-term goals.
Kevin?
Yes.
Can we handle these one at a time and if we have questions about them?
Yeah, well, Brian, do you have anything more to add before we take questions? Not on that first one, I guess, other than to say, I, I think what we want to know is what's the village board's position on the, the concept? And if the village board is open to it, the only thing that I would say, and I think Kevin touched on this, is at the end of all of this conversation, we're going to want a little bit of freedom and we can identify that, but a little bit of freedom to figure out what terms and conditions should go on the phase one development agreement and what should go in the annexation agreement that you've already conditionally approved.
So one, one of the things that I have for a question, Kevin and Brian, is if, this is something that has not been figured in from a cost perspective for the village. Is that correct? This is a new ask for us?
Correct.
And that being said, is this something we should be talking about in open session, Brian?
Well, I, I would say the dollar amount at $9,000 is probably, I would say this, there's not much room for negotiations on this one. I think it's pretty much either yes, we'll accept it or no, we won't. And so, and you know, if you agree with that, then I think that it's probably appropriate for open session. That being said, if, if you guys are not comfortable and you think that there are additional options to be considered such that, you know, we should, we should be in closed session because we, we, we need to be able to decide how far we're willing to go. If it's not 100%, then it would be an appropriate closed session discussion.
So my question there is, is simply, I believe we agreed to pay for a part of this road. Is that correct?
We, we have. We've, we've said that the, we, we had a cost share agreement that's in the, you know, the, the annexation agreement that's been conditionally approved by the village. And that was a 75, 25% split where the developers paying the 75% and the village paying 25%.
Okay. So I'm just going to go around. If board members have any questions in regards to this road, I'm, I'm glad to hear. We're going to be keeping this sledding hill right off the bat. So Kristen, any questions?
No, I'm looking at a magnified version of the map and it looks like it's 6,000 square feet over the course of those three lots. 6,010, if I'm seeing the numbers correctly.
Yeah, 6,000 times the dollar fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Nyla, Fry?
I, I'm very, it's very difficult for me to visualize up of this. And so basically, if we vote for this, we're not voting for this design of the road or anything. We're voting to allow $9,000 to go toward the project. Or is that totally wrong?
I, I think, I don't know if you want to, I, I think that, I think that you, you've got it. Essentially, like Kevin said, at this point, we don't know what, how the construction plans for the extension of Division Street are going to be laid out. One of the things that we're anticipating though, is the potential that the road would need to move to the east like is shown in what Kevin has provided. And so if it turns out that the plans are such so that the, the road does need to move to the east in part to protect the sledding hill, then what we would be agreeing to is yes, we would be, you know, to the extent that the road moves this much, we'd pay up to this amount of money. But the decision on exactly where the road is going to be located has not been made yet. It's just if this were to happen, we'd agree that we'd, we'd chip in the additional $9,000.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Bill Random.
So I guess mine is that on the skip, maybe it's for Kevin. What do you, what do we expect the total cost of that road to us will be roughly?
Our 25%. I don't know if we had that nailed down yet. It's probably in the neighborhood of a, a half three, $400,000 project and we're on the hook for about 25% of that.
So I guess I'm a little worried if this is on, you know, for being asked to contribute $9,000 into the scale on the, the, whether, you know, the viability of the developer at a certain point. If that's, that this is a necessary part of it all, but I will hold my tongue a bit on it. It just seems sort of trivial in the scale. Thank you.
Gary Hertzberg.
No, I think it's a good compromise on both parties. So I, I support it.
Phil Williams?
Looks like an acceptable plan to me.
Aaron Moran.
No questions.
Okay, moving on, Kevin.
Okay, I'd like to spend a little time talking about the traffic impact analysis. So the TIA identified some improvements that'll be necessary at the intersection of Division Street and Main Street. And so those, a couple ran, I guess, lane realignments will be done as part of phase one. And then there'll be some striping and necessary lane improvements up at Schumacher, but those won't be necessary or wouldn't be required until their roadway from the subdivision, it comes out onto Schumacher Road. The other part of this is that the, we've all identified, or I shouldn't say we all, the DOT has identified some long-term improvements along Main Street. Likely a roundabout at the Schumacher Road up at the Culvers intersection. And then some late, new lane configurations at the Division Street and Highway 19. Those are significant road improvements that'll be necessary probably in the next 10 to 20 years. And those are, are normally done at the DOT's directive. And then they'll, they'll ask the, the local municipalities to contribute towards those projects. And the concept that I've discussed with the Veridian is that they pay their fair share of our share. So if it's, and I'll just give you some numbers here just for an example, and I don't think we have exact numbers of what this road is going to be. But it's, if it's in the neighborhood of a $5 million projects to make the improvements up at, at the Culvers intersection, Division Street intersection, they typically would ask the, the village to pay 20% of that. We've calculated that the traffic from their proposed subdivision is about 7% of the traffic at those two intersections. So we've asked them to make a contribution of 7% of our 20% share. So that's what's in the, the proposed improvements. The second part that we've asked them to do, and, and I don't think I've heard back yet from Veridian, and maybe we can hear from them tonight, is that Jason pointed out and I totally support it, is that we should see some pedestrian improvements at the Division Street intersection. So that right now, when you cross the highway, you have to do it on the west side of the intersection, you know, at, at Village Park. So if somebody is, is, is coming, I'll just give you an example. If somebody is riding their bike or is going to walk up to Culvers, there's really no safe way of getting across Highway 19 except for at Division Street. We have a great trail system on the south side of, of Highway 19. So we would expect those pedestrians or bicyclists to cross the, cross Highway 19 at Division Street. What they'd have to do now is they'd have to cross basically three times or three quarters around in order to get on that trail system. They'd have to go across Division Street, then across Main Street, and then across Division Street again. What we've asked Veridian to do is look at adding a safe pedestrian crossing on the other side of Division Street. So on the east side of Division Street. So you're only crossing Main Street once. You're only crossing one time to get down to our trail system. So with that, why don't I, why don't I take a pause and see if you have any questions about the TIA?
Okay, Phil.
No questions.
Aaron?
No questions. I think the, it's a really smart idea to have that extra pedestrian crossway at Main Street and Division. I think that could improve the safety.
Okay, Bill Random? Sounds like good ideas. Gary Hertzberg?
No questions.
Here. Kristen Rungy?
I think the pedestrian crossing is essential and with the TIA, would they pay that when it happens? Or are we asking for that upfront?
We would ask, we would ask them to make a contribution as they get building permits. So as they go along.
Okay, thanks.
And Nyla Fry?
No questions.
Okay, Kevin, go on.
Okay, the final item is the, the water improvements. We've identified, and it's not a good exhibit here, but part of the development as part of phase one is in that high pressure zone. So it's connecting up to the high pressure system. So there'll be a water main connection that goes back really along the park, along Division Street extended, and then up to the, to the water, really the, I guess, up on Lexington Drive, the boosted water station. There's going to take some time before they can connect up to that high pressure system. So as part of phase one, there'll be a handful of lots, I think it's around a dozen lots, that'll be on the low pressure system for short term. But ultimately, by the end of next summer, will be connected on to the high pressure system. We just want them to make their clients or their home, the people that are going to live there, know that they're going to be on a lower pressure system. It'll meet and exceed all the DNR requirements, but they're not going to have the typical water pressure that you'd want to see in a new home, especially up on, on the second floor. So we want to put them a notice. I think we're acceptable to this. I think we worked it through with Wanakee Utilities in order to accommodate it. But it's just the second, second part of that is they need to make sure that, you know, we don't get negative feedback knowing that it's going to take another, you know, it could, we could have people living there on a low pressure system there for a couple months. That's, that's it for the water system. Any questions on that?
I have a question. I don't know anything about water pressure, but I know my neighbors are going to ask me, will that affect the water pressure in the development down the hill from where this project's going to happen?
Good question. No, it will not affect the existing pressure on that system. It will not have any impact on, because that's what we're talking about is the elevation of the, of the roads and the houses compared to the high pressure system. They're not on the high pressure system in your neighborhood. And so there's, there's, the capacity of water is fine, so it won't have any negative impact on their pressure. It'll just mean ultimately, we need to have some secondary connections so that we have a proper fire protection.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Erin Moran?
No questions.
Bill Random?
None.
Gary Hertzberg?
None.
Phil Williams?
None.
Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Okay, so Kevin, what do we need to do at this point?
There's a recommended motion on page 23 of the packet. It's the approved amendments to the annexation agreement and approval of developers, subject to final approval by the village engineer and village attorney.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the amendments to the annexation agreement and approval of the developers agreement, subject to the final approval of the village engineer and village attorney.
Motion by Phil Williams.
I'll second it.
Second by Nyla Fry. Any other comments from anyone? If you have one, can you put all, everybody on the board now again, Kevin? Or Todd? Thank you. Ryan Kleimeyer has a question.
I, I don't have a question. I just have a comments. I mean, I think the, the guidance that you all provided as part of that discussion is pretty, was clear. I just want to make you guys aware that there are some additional changes that we'll be making to the development agreement at a staff level. I would say that they're, they're not financial in nature and they're consistent with what we've done before. The other thing that we may do is, you know, the, the purpose of the phase one agreement is really to address issues that are relevant to phase one. So for example, the discussion that we just had about Division Street, you know, that's probably more appropriate in the annexation agreement. And so just to let you know, that's probably where we'll see that language. But then the reason why it's there is the annexation agreement is essentially there to cover the entire development, whereas phase one is just directed at the public improvements and the other developments associated with that first phase.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments?
Well, should I add the other two legs of that motion to that, Brian?
No, I don't think so. I think that Kevin had provided some different motions depending on, you know, where we went with our discussion. He wanted to have some flexibility, but to me, that, that motion that you read, it covers both the annexation agreement and the developers agreement. We will make changes that are consistent with the discussion that we had tonight and then some other discussions that we had, we've had at the staff level. But Kevin raised, I think, the most significant issues is, is part of his analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Raise your hands.
Seeing done. What's going on with Gary's shirt? Anybody else?
He's being absorbed.
I love it. It's kind of neat.
Okay.
Sorry, all right.
He's in camel.
Raise your hands. Let's see those hands. Look at that. Go ahead, roll call vote.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we need one more motion. Move adjourn. Motion by Bill Random to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Roll call vote, Caitlin.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thanks, everyone. Have a safe rest of the next, next couple weeks and have a great night. Thank you.
Thanks.
Your time, appreciate it.